This is Access Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 10th meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access lapeur county dot org.
Meeting with which? Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Let's see what time is it now that we're starting? Okay, Joan, please do the roll call.
President, I had a brief.
Here.
Vice President Michael Martinez.
Present.
Councilmember Ralph Fox.
Present.
Rich Young. Though already dead, but he may be later, I understand. Yes. And I'm here. Fire Chief Gary Bendick.
Present.
Police Chief Mark Swistach.
Present.
Park Board President Dolly Milliken.
Here.
BCA President Matt Bowen is absent. And, okay, what do we got here? Building Commissioner Code Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb.
Here.
Flood Plane Administrator Ray Dumbrus is absent. Plan Commission President Ralph Fox, we know he's here. Website Samantha Arnold is absent. And Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski.
Last one to leave.
All right, thank you.
I didn't hear everybody's name.
But not the least, okay?
Not the least.
Thank you, thank you, Joan. We will move on to adopting the meeting agenda. I sent, this afternoon, I sent out with a few, an agenda that had been corrected with a few additions. So, please review if you haven't reviewed it yet and let me know if there was something here that we needed to eliminate or to add.
I have no comments.
Okay.
No.
None for you? Okay, then I need a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Michael Martinez. Ralph Fox moved. Michael Martinez seconded to adopt the agendas presented to the meeting. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three ayes. Okay, the minutes. Joan provided us with the minutes, I believe this afternoon. And has anybody had a chance to review them?
Had to.
Re- review, I'm sorry, Joan?
I said it was at noon.
Oh, it was at, well, you know, I didn't see the exact time that was written down. Oh my goodness.
Okay.
I had a couple of minor comments, Joan. On page three at the top, it says appointments to boards and commissions. It indicates the advisory plan commission positions have been filled, but not really because we're missing Mike Mancini and his role as town councilor appointment to the about.
Okay.
And then further down, within that same section, under the advisory plan commission, it says Ralph Fox was absent, but I was actually here.
Where?
On the third page, under appointments.
Under what? Under what did you say?
Under advisory plan commission. It says Ralph Fox absent.
On page three, Joan.
Oh. Okay, that's easy. I'm actually sure of that. The red spot, maybe it's more light. I work with some of the Volunteer Fire Fighters Association, one of their member benefits. And I already saw the trucks outside, and we have the red guy in charge and ask about coming to a future meeting, but.
Uh, no.
So, Volunteer Fire Fighters Association, come here.
Let's go outside.
All right. Okay.
It's the, that's all.
All right, let's move on. Joan, did you find what Ralph is referring to? Okay. Anything else?
No.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. All right, well then, I need a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
When you're talking about appointments to the boards, it does say here that one council seat needs to be filled.
Yes, but it says advisory plan commission positions have been filled.
They were.
Well, technically, I guess.
We're down a person today, that's all I'm saying.
Well, today doesn't make any difference from last month's meeting, that's what.
We're down a person on last month's meeting.
Dyna reported that there's.
That's okay.
Now, you have to listen to that sometimes.
I didn't report on the plan commission?
No.
Oh.
No, it was on, yeah, appointments to board.
Oh, that I said that there were no appointments to make today is what I reported, that there were no appointments to make that day.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, they do have, you do have them to be filled, but they, you don't have.
Well, we have, okay, it could be that, all I wrote is appointments to boards and commissions liaison positions, and it was empty. I don't think I had anything else on it. I don't have that agenda with me right now, so can't get it, but, okay. Thank you, all right? So Ralph moved to accept the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes have been approved as presented and corrected, so, or adjusted. Let us move on to the reports from committees, officers and clerk treasurer.
Before we go into further signings, so I was.
Okay, very good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, through the minutes, now go to the additional appropriations for April. And I think you all have a copy of that.
No, of what?
April additional appropriations.
Got it.
I've got additional vouchers.
Or vouchers.
Okay.
That's what I meant, vouchers. Office depot for office supplies and copy paper, $38.32. NIPSCO for garage electric, $66.89. Street lights for April, $17.49. AT&amp;T for the telephone and fax, $156.57. And also to the internet for, we had a tablet which now has been converted to an iPhone. Chase Card Services software for Adobe, $16.4. Software for Microsoft, $15.54. Freeman and Associates, related console, $220. And Chase, that's also on Chase Card Services. And then for the web development, which was approved by Samantha, $300. I believe that's going to be a yearly fee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. NIPSCO for heat for the garage, $103.35 for April. I guess it was told.
Cold.
What?
Cold.
$103.35 for a grand total, $934.20. Pretty low this.
I have no questions.
Okay, nothing?
Neither do I.
All right, I need a motion to approve these vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Okay.
And I will second that motion.
All right, Michael Martinez has moved Ralph Fox seconded to approve the, are these the additional vouchers?
Right.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. Signature, both of us. May. Town of Long Beach for police protection, $4,877. Michiana Shores Voucher for our department, $105 for the hall rental and the office. Business supplies, office depot, envelopes, labels and mailings for the flyers, $87.05. Republic Services for refuse pickup, $3,888. Reef Riley Construction for the paving of the road at the intersection from Al Porter and Oakdale, $20,430. Department of Waterworks, $9.49. Summit Supply Corporation for parks and recs for swings and the attachments for the swings, Comcast for, I don't know what Comcast, I know it's between the post office and, and them. We seem to be losing the check somewhere along the line, simply had to rewrite another one for $81.30 for April. For May, $81.30. Lapeur County Treasurer, $541.20 for the white ditch maintenance fee. Brenda Heckman, $52.65 for travel to the bank and post office. Michiana Shores Voucher Fire Department for fire projection in May, $3,628.75. And Comcast, they have a late fee on it of $10. I went ahead and paid it, we may get a credit back after we get through arguing over it. Department of Waterworks, $9.49 for grand total of $34,290.3.
All right, council members, any questions or concerns?
None.
Okay.
No.
Michael? Okay. I need a motion to approve the vouchers for May.
I'll make that.
Okay, and I need a second. Okay, Ralph Fox moved. Michael Martinez seconded approving the vouchers for May. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye, thank you. Okay, that motion has passed.
Okay.
Okay.
A Michael Coleman gave me his, Hales Heights, Illinois address. I did not look it up to see where, what his Michiana Shores address is, but he said he sold the house. Now he wants a re, he, let me see what month he said. On April 12th. Now he wants a refund for the money until July 1st. Unless the council tells me to give it back to him. Our normal procedure is not once that fee is paid, if they sell a house, it's up to the realtor to put it in the closing cost.
That's true.
Probably was there, I have no way of knowing whether that was in the closing costs or not.
Okay, and this was with regards to the leaf pickup?
Leaf pickup and, and refuse. He paid for both.
Okay.
He wants a.
All right, well, leaf.
Sixty-five dollars.
Okay, well then, maybe what we should do is just recommend that he contact his realtor. You know, to find, you know, with regards to that.
Okay.
And we could just, we could just, you know, explain to him and say that once you pay, you don't return this, and you need to speak with the realtor who handled this because that realtor would have taken care of it.
That's a normal procedure.
Okay.
I just wanted the council to be aware of it, and if they want to change our procedure.
All right, thank you, Joan.
And I also received final determination on the national flood insurance program, and it's something I believe Ray was handling. I sent you the notice on it.
Yes, yes.
Ray was handling it.
Yes.
Okay.
So those should be included under our communications later on, probably, right?
Good question.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I suppose it could be.
Okay. All right, thank you, Joan. Is there something else, or is that, are we done with your section of vouchers?
The only other thing I had to add, Brenda and I attended the cybersecurity.
Okay.
I guess you'd call it a seminar that was put on at Michigan City Town Hall by the Indiana Analyst, Indiana Office of Technology. It was very interesting.
Okay, very good.
As far as cybersecurity, and they're setting up their own websites that we could use and go through.
Okay.
So it might be something, if you're interested in.
Okay, very good.
She will come up and explain it to everybody, so.
Okay.
Might be worth our while to do it, we might be able to save $300 a year.
All right.
If we have more security to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Joan. All right, in this section as well, we have a short report on the 75th anniversary celebration, birthday celebration, from Jean Paxton. And it reads as follows. The 75th Birthday Committee met on April 25th at Kincaid Park. Jean Paxton, Dinah Dumbrus, Bob Sokowski, Carol Brunier, Terry Tepper, Jim Baines, Rich Young, Dolly Milliken, Sam Paxton were in attendance. They discussed the parade route. All participants will meet at the firehouse at 9:00 a.m. on July 16. Bob Sokowski, along with the volunteers, will line up the group and proceed to Kincaid Park. The Allard Brothers will be performing from 12:30 to 1:15 p.m. in the gazebo. This is a couple of young men that the Tepper family is inviting on behalf of the town. They are, you know, going to pay for them to play a little bit of music. Rich Young will be the master of ceremonies, as mentioned earlier. Face painting, rock painting, the picnic and pickleball tournament will all take place in Kincaid Park. The other games and activities will be worked out later. We tested Sam Paxton's pulled pork, all beef hot dogs from Aldi, Sun Chips and Coleslaw. We approved the menu for the picnic as pulled pork mini sliders, hot dogs on poppy seed buns, watermelon cookies from Arturros and chips. In an effort to save money, Sam Paxton will be smoking pork butts and freezing as the RCVPs come in. 60-plus shirts were sold and distributed at the pancake breakfast on May 1st. People had to order them in advance, and they are available, you can just go through the town's website and order them. And it is, all that information is also included, by the way, in the flyer you have received or will be receiving. Both events are on the town website. I would encourage every, anyone wanting to attend either event to book now. It has been established that the firehouse can accommodate 160 people on August 27th. Our next meeting will be May 31st. The location of the meeting is yet to be determined. The firemen have been asked if a public room is available. I'm not sure if anybody responded to Jean yet. So, and Joan, Jean also adds that, oh, I just responded to Jean and I told her that I have added the proposal to suspend, to suspend the ordinance regarding the horses for the parade to our tonight's meeting. Okay, that is it for Jean Paxton's report. Council members, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. So let us move on now to, we have nothing for number seven right now. So let us move to departmental reports, please, chief, please.
Good evening, everyone. The Long Beach Police Department in relationship to the three communities that we serve responded to 168 calls for service in the month of April. When compared to previous year, 217 calls for service for a decrease of 49 calls for service. During the month of April, we documented 15 incident reports with a total of three individuals that were arrested. All the arrests were related to traffic-related offenses, of which two were motor vehicle intoxicated. And then we also had one incident report here in the town of Michiana Shores back on April 19th, and that was on 200 block with three wall, and that was in reference to civil matter between the contractor and the homeowner there. Started, started just moving into that investigation, had set contact with both parties, and they are looking out the differences there. The radar trailer was deployed today on Al Porter. It'll stay out for a couple of weeks. Once I get the traffic information back from the radar trailer, I will share that with all of you.
Thank you.
And I've asked that all of our staff also spend some extra time conducting some traffic stops in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, anyone? Great, thank you so much, chief. All right, on to the next. Fire Chief, Yuri Bendick.
I've got maybe two months reports since I was last month, so. For the month of March, spent 231.55 hours on everything. We had five meetings during the month. During that month, we had one, two calls, two medical calls in Michiana Shores on Dream Wall Way, the other one on Al Porter. For the month of April, we had four meetings, we spent 233.3 hours. During that month, we had two calls to the same address on Holland Drive. The person finally went in the second night with the inmates in the hospital. So that was it. The breakfast on Sunday was the biggest one we ever had.
All right.
It was great, I think everyone enjoyed getting out. It would have been a little bit warmer, but that was all right. Also, last, during the month of April, we finished up our IAS report on it. The gal paying here, we didn't get with some other people to get the stuff sent to her. So we should know about five or six months, what our rating is going to be, both of those states, same or approved, we don't know. So, because there's a lot of pieces to it that we, it's out of our control, so. A lot of it has to do with the water system.
Okay.
Of large, so. Other than that, that's.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question. Is there, do you have any other news with regards to the bike trail? I've had some people ask me questions, and I have, you know, I said, it's not an hour, you know, frust.
I had a conversation with the engineering firm, and he probably shouldn't have told me this, but I'm kind of dragging my feet, because if this doesn't get done when it goes to the downstate in June, that's when he wants to try to get it done, but if he doesn't, then I have to go back for more funding and possibly change some things here. So I'm kind of dragging my feet. I haven't heard from the guy that's supposed to do the appraisal type or anything except for that part of the engineering firm.
Okay.
So who knows? He said that they could do it on the south, south side of the monument. It's not safe to do it on the north side of the monument, which I totally disagree with. And so the conversation was, well, then maybe we need to bring it up to why it goes to go across. Well, to me, that would be a no brainer. So we just come all around across and angle back down our ground. So we'll see, and then the monument can stay.
Okay.
So I'm dragging my feet there, it's been here since, who knows?
Yeah, okay.
As far as Michiana Shores.
Yes, absolutely.
So.
Thank you. All right.
That's all I'm concerned.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we move on to our next report, and that will be the building commissioner or enforcement officer.
So I could send a report back email, but as far as SDR, we have one pending application that will go in front of BCA on May 19th. None were approved, no applications were approved since we are sending that, as we have been hearing conditions applicable. The Plan Commission met on May 3rd and approved the revised fireplace construction so that it falls outside of their setback. And then 420 Al Porter, I think, cycle, revise the permit for its garage, that is approved. And the request by the coffees for the parking area is still on hold. We're waiting for the Lapeur County Health Department to approve, prove it since it's very close to their subject system. So other building permits approved for 3642, replacing moldy insulation and drywall, and 102 Meadow Deck, some deck expansion. I did replace the stop work order at 3602 Lakeshore Drive. They did send a letter from their attorney, and so I'm not sure, we're kind of frightened of the issue.
Hey, sorry, sorry. When did you put that stop work order on? Was that recently?
Just today.
Okay.
Just today. I sent a letter from the attorney, I thought, well, I wonder if I should revise it, but then I just, we just used to go like this. So, so I thought about revising, but then, and that's fine. They complained about the stop work.
So what's the next step?
So I think it's going to have to go to the attorneys now, and they will have to have an attorney respond to their attorney.
Is there anybody we can get Laura to do something now? Well, the thing is, it just keeps stretching out. So the plans are planted now, and, you know, it's just, every time I go down there, they've added to the situation.
Yeah. Well, I think we need to make sure that you're keeping a good list of everything, all the stuffs that they're doing, you know, since you started doing this. I can't answer for Laura right now. Let us see, I mean, we can ask her if she would be able to do something for us.
Just get a letter written so that we have a line to be saying, it's just, they just keep pushing.
Okay.
And we're, we can't stop them, they can't stop them. It's not in their proof to do that.
Right.
So, and if you want me to call Laura, maybe you do that, you know, because they, you know, they need some kind of actual funds.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea, instead of going through middleman, then go directly to Laura, okay? Since you two were working on it, okay?
Sure.
Good suggestion, Ralph, thank you.
Okay, I sent out a citation, Bill Cummins rents his home, unsure from business, but had a permit still. So they went out to, I'm not here to see who you guys are.
Bill Cummins or Peter Cummins?
Really?
It's Bill.
I know, but I thought his name's Peter.
So.
Deb, isn't the name Peter Cummins, not Bill Cummins?
Oh, it is Peter Cummins, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, so hasn't, so we've not noticed any, uh, yet. So, yeah, 327, Oakland is building plans for an addition, that will come in front of the Plan Commission next month, and 418, next rail, and 520 Dream Wall, they'll be submitting plans, 412 Al Porter will be submitting plans for interior renovation toward pursuing an SDR permit. So, yeah, so I'm still, you know, monitoring, trying to get some.
So, Deb, about the addresses, you know this.
I don't call, I don't call them that because I don't want to.
Yeah, and that's fine, but don't give them those addresses. These are probably appropriate, but those have to be assigned by the Plan Commission?
Right.
So we don't want them showing up with documents with those addresses on it, that won't go over.
Yeah, I haven't had that.
Okay.
Written, of course, on, so. But, yes, just monitoring several of the construction programs going on, and when I submitted the draft for an application for occupancy certificate, did, I think, I submitted to the Plan Commission, asked them to look at it, and to make recommendation, Matt suggested to take off the fire inspection, and so I did that, but I do have copies here. And so there is.
The report? Don't we have a section for that?
Sorry, I sent it to the Plan.
This, this is going to come up.
Yeah, we have a.
In today's edition.
Right, so, okay. Did you already have it? Do you have it?
So that's one without a?
Yeah, that's, this one, yeah.
Okay.
Fire.
Okay.
Yes, well, I wanted, the house that's some 424 Dream Wall, the one that's just done, those people are, it's been occupied.
Yeah.
I assume they got something from the county.
They did. Right, so the next one that's waiting now is the one at Michiana Drive, 3945.
Yeah, the 383.
Yeah, right. So that's the one who's, yeah, waiting there. So, yeah, and I haven't read anything about the sewer issue, although Eric Perrins, who was at 3642, you know, had been in touch with the city and provided this draft agreement between the owner and the Michigan City Sanitary District. And so, I mean, it's all really moved until, until, you know.
No, we're, we cannot move on anything until, so.
I'm not sure, I've seen with.
Not between Michigan City and the owner, I don't think I've seen.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, you just pass.
No, I don't have a Michigan City, I've never gotten this from Michigan City, because I did ask somebody, he said, I don't have anything else. Okay, so, do you have an extra copy, or is this for us? Okay, great, okay, and if you've got, okay.
Yeah, he just gave me into.
All right, thank you.
So.
I'll, yes, I will scan and send this, yeah, we will share it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Deb. Any other questions? Ralph? Michael? No? Okay, great, thank you, Deb. Great. Okay, let's move on to our next.
Yes.
Okay, that will be Dolly Milliken, Park Board.
I was wondering how much of your question, the guy that's supposed to come that would be the guy before for the park, if they had gone, today would have been a beautiful day, but he wasn't there.
Who was supposed to come, for what?
The guy cleaning.
Oh, well, I mean, he has, obviously, he's going to be putting it into his schedule. I mean, I have no idea, you know, I have nothing to do with the.
They, that's.
Well, it's, it could be, but, but Dolly, that's, he's doing, I don't know what the schedule was decided, Rich, I think, and Jean were dealing with him, so they would Rich, I think, and Jean were dealing with him, so they would know that. I don't know it.
Okay. Same today, so I don't know. Other than that, I think everything of yours are doing good.
Okay.
So we haven't done anything else, but will they put clothes on here, something on the, when they're painting?
Put what on?
Clothes, the park, if it talks-
Oh, I don't know. I think we'll probably have to, this is a very good question. Okay? All right, good question. But you know, we're going to let, because that's falling under the boosters, we're going to let Rich handle that to make that, so we'll tell him about it, okay? Okay, because the boosters are taking care of paying for this part. So we'll ask Rich to take care of that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much for a good suggestion. Joan, did you have a question?
Yes, since we're talking about the park, I did get an notice from the Summit Company from which they ordered all the swings and all the paraphernalia to hook them up.
Yes.
They've been shipped.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
So we'll see when they get here.
All right, so Joan, if you didn't hear, Joan just told us that the new swings and the swing setups for the playground have been shipped. So that's great. And that's part of the park board.
Right, yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, let us move on to road commissioner, Bob Seltowski.
Not much of a report for Pinkwell. We had to install Albert, the big truck, and put barricades up for some trees that doesn't power around.
Okay. All right. So let me ask this quick question of you then, that Dolly asked about with regards to working on if we're going to be playing in the park. Do you think we, if they're painting in it, we don't have to do any kind of road closings or anything, right?
There'll be several road closures, Pinewood and Oakdale and-
That's for the, but that's for the parade, right?
That'll be for all the time the kids live.
Okay, but not for the, as someone is working? We don't need to worry about any kind of signs on the roads? You know, because there's going to be a gentleman working on sand blasting, you know, sanding, priming, painting, the, we don't need anything. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, Bob.
That road looks nice when repaved.
I'm not happy with the hump that we got in front of the trees. We got a hole.
Yeah.
Snowballing away, all of that.
You need to get it back out here?
I'm going to call and see if there's something to do with the first step.
Yeah, and then how about-
Do you want me to hold paint until they get it straightened out?
No. So it's okay.
Okay, and how about those, what I asked you before, what I said I heard about from one of the residents? The two little poles?
So.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Advisory plan commission.
Not much to report. We approved a, we made the permit to probably put a fireplace on the porch. Inspector, my friend, he hadn't asked me and was pretty light.
Okay, thank you. All right, BCA Matt is not here. They did not have a meeting last month, but there will be a meeting on May 19th. So we'll get a report going forward. White ditch drainage board, there was a meeting this morning and I know that I have already contacted Mick Wolf to ask him to remove the debris that is in the ditch from El Porto heading towards the Michigan State Line. We had asked him before and I contacted the drainage board and asked them, I told them that he hadn't done it yet. So I reminded him about it today and I think that the drainage board is going to remind him about it too because they're not terrible, but we wouldn't want them to get stuck up, you know, because they're like small, thin branches, but they can, you know, travel quickly and become like a, you know, looks like a beaver's nest then and stuff. So that was about it and they did tell me that someone did come in or had requested to come before the drainage board with regards to getting a hold harmless agreement and permission to put a pool in at 3915. However, they did not show up on time. It was a real tour and she went to the office and they told her, see you next month. So, because they were too late. They didn't realize they have to get, you know, the board to vote. That's it for the drainage board.
What was that address, 3915?
3915 Hiawatha.
Oh, 15, I'm sorry.
15, yes, Hiawatha. Okay, website from Samantha Arnold. I don't have any particular report except that she's been working on, you know, helping make sure that everything is out there, even with regards to events that are taking place. I know she helped with the, she put something up for the pancake breakfast. She's working on the town's celebrations coming up for the summer. NERC, NERC's meeting took place last month after our meeting and NERC, the big, there were several, you know, things that had been brought up, but one of the biggest was the fact that, you know, surprise, surprise, there's going to be construction on 94th and 65, just in case, you know. I mean, this is the way he said it, to surprise, we have construction going on. I guess it's closer to the Illinois line, between Illinois, the line and Klein Avenue and then I think on 65, it's going to be heading down south of 30 even, you know, from, all the way, all the way from the toll road, all the way down, you know, past 30. So that's going to be taking up some stuff. They did not have any other new information either on their part about the Marquette Greenways Trail that's coming through. And the only other thing was, you know, talking about the fact that the South Shore work is progressing and, you know, everybody being so excited and a lot of inquiries coming in about, you know, what's going on and things to build and develop with regards to the new second track. That's it for NERC. No more COVID-19 meetings. I think I should take that off the agenda.
I don't know. I don't know, they keep saying where-
Well, it might, that's, that's why I kept leaving it on, but, you know, so, but we can always edit it if we need. Okay. Unfinished business now. Next steps in the road grant application process or report of an engineer. Okay, so I contacted both, Shem, I think it's Shem Khalil, and I actually, and contacted John Doyle as well. Neither one, I didn't follow up with them this week. Neither one responded to me and I asked them if either one would be willing to meet up and talk to us, how to walk us through this next step on the community crossings grant, you know, with regards to the second, you know, estimation of all the work that has to be done. Shem said he's willing to do something online. Maybe that's what's holding up Mr. Doyle, I'm not sure, but I will follow up with them tomorrow. I apologize for not having more now.
It's fine.
Pardon?
Online's fine.
Oh, I figured online is very good, you know, easier for you probably to do too, so.
Always happens.
Yeah, okay, so I will follow up tomorrow. All right, Ralph, can you handle B, the hiring of a new town attorney?
Yeah, I talked to five different firms so far and probably seven or eight different attorneys. Most of them, it doesn't fit for one reason or another. They, it turns out a lot of their names I've gotten are getting older attorneys that aren't in the business anymore. They have absolutely no experience with municipal law, so, you know, they fall off the list pretty quick. But we do have two firms we're talking to right now. We've had a round of interviews with them and we're waiting to get a proposal back from one of the firms. And once we have that, we may have some back and forth with those two firms to try to narrow things down and then I expect us to be able to vote at least by the next meeting. If we find it important enough, we could have a emergency session just to-
Yes, we can. Okay.
Can you give me the two firms?
I will give those to you, but-
Write it out for you.
Thanks, Ray.
Disconsumption requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
They haven't given proposals yet.
Thank you, what?
No, I was just asking about the proposal.
No, no, that's what we're waiting for, so.
Okay.
Okay, so now let's go on to C, determination of ARPA fund uses, uses and, you know, all we did is last month, I know that, you know, we, we started talking and saying we needed to get this, you know, we started putting it together to see what we would like to do. So these were some of the things that had been mentioned. The additional one-time pay for the clerk treasurer and her assistant, purchase, it's an additional allowed expense through the ARPA funds for the additional work that had to be done during the COVID time period. The purchase of electronic equipment for the town hybrid meetings and Ralph is working on getting us some estimates on, you know, something like this. And I know we have the cybersecurity for the town included in this. So these are things that I think we could probably definitely list and then of course add something else as we go on. We know we already have the notice boards, you know, listed for that. I don't know whether these would have to be listed on any new report right now or if they've already been listed.
They're listed on a report, but believe it or not, I'm not getting much help from getting everything submitted. Got them typed in, but there's something that they won't submit. I don't know what I did wrong.
Oh, you mean with regards to ARPA?
14 pages that you have to fill in for the two signboards.
Okay. All right.
So if anybody's very computer literate and can understand programs and-
You're in the update in the-
Pardon?
The video teleconference.
Do you have an update for us, Robert?
Briefly.
Sure, go ahead.
Chief Swistec was very helpful. He gave me a tour of the Long Beach setup. It's really, really nice. They have unique requirements there because it's a two-story open atrium, so the sound is a big issue. So they have lots of microphones for each board member. It's a really nice system. I have an appointment with the gentleman, the contractor that helped him figure out what he needed and we'll be down here, we'll go through what our requirements are and get a couple of different levels of proposals. Hopefully they'll have that to discuss it next month's meeting.
Okay. All right, you may run in and check in with Kevin because of the, you know, to make sure that whatever sound we have gets recorded easily by this, does he have it in size?
Oh, excellent, okay. Technical issues that could-
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, great, thank you very much.
One of the things I want to mention, you put down here for one-time pay for clerk treasurer. I'm an elected official, I cannot accept anything. They will not let elected officials get any money.
Oh.
Dang, can I have that? I wasn't letting.
That was the last that I heard. Do you know something different?
All right, well, we'll find out because I thought it was possible.
Right.
I mean, I don't, I never turned out money, but I don't want to take something that's-
Yeah, you're not supposed to, okay. Makes sense, okay. So we'll check into this to find out, okay?
They're not supposed to have anything given to us. $25 is the maximum that we can receive of anything.
Okay, but that might be a gift.
That's not just for us. That's for employees too.
Okay.
Say employee gets a little money underneath table.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're watching that real close.
Yeah, okay.
That's why that-
Well, thank you for the heads up and we'll see how that might be able to be done. Yeah.
Internal controls came in.
Okay. All right, then any other things to add for that or we will address those as we go on still? Because we do have time to spend.
Yeah, I think we need to keep pressuring this and as Joan said, this stuff taken care of. We do have three years or two years to spend the money.
Right.
But we need to-
Time flies.
Clean this up and get it done and we'll come up with a plan for next year.
Yeah, okay. All right, well then, okay, but we are working already on this. We'll try to find out what we can do with regards to clerk treasurer and her assistant and then, of course, the equipment you're working on already. We already have cybersecurity, which is part of that, right?
Well, Brenda can do it.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, thank you then on that. So any, but we don't have any word on installation on the notice boards because Rich is not here and Rich was going to be working on it. So we'll see if he does come in, we may be able to get some info from him then on that. The E75th Birthday Celebration Committee is, oh, this is where I mentioned that, is requesting permission to allow the horses on the roads for the July 19th parade. So the parade would go down-
You've got 16th on the agenda.
July 16th, isn't that the parade?
You said 19th.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It is 16th, not 19th. Boy, I don't know, I read that one upside down, okay. And the parade route would start here at the town. It would go down to Meadow and, correct, chief? Go down Meadow, up to Leeds Park and then down Dogwood, toward Dogwood, right?
Dogwood, yeah.
All right, okay, towards, you know, where Birchwood is and then down to Kincaid Park. So the request from the 75th Birthday Celebration Committee is that the ordinance that does not allow horses on the streets of the city be suspended just for the time period of that parade. Because once the parade is finished and they have reached Kincaid Park, the horses will then be, you know, brought back into the paddock or wherever they're going to bring them back, you know, into their paddock that they have right on their own property. So all they would do is participate in the parade. Because the parade will have cars, it'll have the horses, kids on bikes, people on golf carts, people walking, you know, whatever. So it'll be a short route and that's it. So that sounds like a very reasonable thing. There's no longer any kind of riding intended on any streets or on the nature path. Everything will take place in the, in the paddock that belongs to Ms. Langman. So gentlemen, any comments, any?
But they are going to be on the streets for the parade.
Only for the parade, so they're asking for a suspension.
Do we have some legal counsel on that as far as insurance? Because our insurance company said that they would not cover any-
Actually, Rich Plisky spoke with Jean and said that there's no problem. And she has insurance on her horses.
That's interesting because Rich Plisky told me that the insurance company wouldn't cover any.
Okay, well, but Claudia Langman-
We need to get something in writing from the insurance company to do that.
Okay.
Because if you've got one story and that's not the other-
Okay. According to the reports that were given before, Claudia Langman said that she's got all the coverage she needs for bringing the horses out on the street, you know, to do that. So anyway, but I'm just saying what she said, but we can request that then. We'll do that tonight, okay?
Well, just to clarify, the groups that are on the street by my house, 300 days out of the year, four or five times, nobody's, I mean, I don't care, I'm just saying, it's never come up before that they're not insured. And they've got clients on our streets.
Yeah, all the time.
Right, but it is a parade.
That's right, it's a parade.
You will, you will have to be honest.
Okay, so.
I don't feel like getting hit by a thousand pound animal.
And we've had problems with them in the past, so.
Well-
I think we need something from the insurance.
Okay, it's, okay, so Michael agrees as well. So what we're going to do is we will ask for a legal document of, you know, or at least a letter of some kind regarding the insurance, okay? Because it is a parade.
And that would be sort of Rich?
Pardon? Well, I don't know if Rich would be doing that or Claudia Langman has, I have gotten information, I've never spoken with her, but she has assured the committee that's working on it that she is, she has shown them that she's got insurance. So we should be able to get it from her then if she's, you know-
For all it seems, what she's covering with her insurance.
Well, then we'll, we need to find out.
Our job is to be covering the town and what happens in the town.
Yeah.
So we need something from Rich.
Okay.
We probably should have it from both of them to be covered.
Okay, so we will find that out, okay? Ask, we can accommodate both Rich, Plisky and Claudia. Ask, we can accommodate both Rich, Pluski, and Claudia. All right. All right, so next we have a short report perhaps on the store, but we really don't have anything on the store hookup, except to say that we are actively, you know, speaking with the attorneys, and the attorneys that we were speaking with would be able to handle this for us, so. And as soon as we get them on board, we're going to go, you know, to get everything straightened out. All right, let us move on to new business, which is a occupancy permit and the proposed form that we just got from Deb.
Hey, Deb, right off the bat, I don't know if it's just visually, but when you print that, when I look at it on the PDF file, it is showing two pages, one the blank on the second page, so.
You can do this, that woman.
Okay, I just saved paper, other than that, it was pretty straightforward with the update of the fire code I think she gave us right here.
Okay.
The form was fine to me. My question is, could you walk us through the process that you'll use with the firm?
So the inspections, as the construction is going on, is by the county contractor, policy county, and it has an inspector's mouth, and they, you know, they do the green tags every time they pass an inspection. And then the county informs me when they have done all the inspections and they're ready for a occupancy permit. So then the owner, the contractor, would complete this application, and then I would, you know, match it with the inspection approvals that I get from the county, because she sends those to me, and then I would just check these other things visually, you know, address instruction here, et cetera. And then, and then I would issue the occupancy permit.
So they would no longer be getting a report from the occupancy?
Right. They'd do the same form, she sends me the form, and it's just, you know, has, and she already puts the payment, but they're not designed, I would, you know, do, finish this...
Well, I would, I think that's the right way to do it, because right now there would be confusion if we had, if somebody gets one from the county, which is, and that's all they need.
Right, yeah, yeah. The county provision allows us, you know, they know that we want to do it, and so they send all the inspection approvals to me, and they're done, and give a report of all the inspections that they've done and passed, and then I think we can vote.
And then you say the county doesn't charge specifically for their occupancy permit, that's included in remaining various...
The final inspection, right, is that they call it?
Final inspection, right.
All right, so, can I, you did mention earlier that you spoke with Matt, and Matt recommended removing fire inspection?
Right.
Okay, so is there, I'm just curious, that you did have it in, so what was the reason for not including it?
Well, he, Matt said, well, I would do those now, and I said, I don't know, that's a good question. And so, so I don't think we do it. The only fire-related inspection that's done is the insulation to make sure that there are no fire holes around outfits.
Right.
The county does that inspection.
Okay, all right.
What was your...
All right. Chief Bendix over there, any kind of concerns for us with regards to that? No? Okay, all right.
Everybody involved in it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I just, yeah, was curious, that if it appeared on somebody's form, you know, what was it, you know, what was it about? Okay, thank you, all right. Now, I think that this form can be approved, we can move to approve the form the way it stands, it doesn't have to go back to the planning commission. This is just a form that's being used by the town, and I think, unless you, Ralph?
No, I'm going to make a motion, we accept the form, it stands today.
Okay, great. Okay, any questions or any comments from you on this?
No.
Michael? No? All right, so Ralph Box?
I'll second that.
Okay, moves, and Michael Martinez seconds to approve the new form, put together the application for occupancy permit. Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it, and we will have a new form out. Thank you. All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks, Deb, for working on that.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, there, I do not have anything else under old business. Okay, there is no attorney report right at this point.
The town clerk request was...
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, why did I put that in?
It is.
Oh, it is on, okay, all right. I printed off the old one, see, instead of my corrected one. Okay, so, okay, that, that would be B under new business, so...
I have questions.
Pardon? You've got, please, go ahead.
Okay, Bob, just real quick, how many quotes did we get?
During when I met with the company that did this, or something that the municipality belonged to was called Southwell, Shortwell, what that does is that combines all state QPA pricing, so you don't have to draw off of it, what you need to do is in one, that...
They can make it that price.
What?
We have not joined that yet.
And that's, that's suffice is about the bit.
But there's probably not enough...
Well, yeah, it could suffice, it just...
The pricing that you gave us is based on...
Based off of Southwell, state can be the price.
Good, just a quick, I looked on that document, it's outdated, it expired April 29, so we're going to be able to get that same pricing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, now, this is not that, you know, we are purchasing this truck tomorrow, or signing in for anything, but because the topic had come up, I had asked Bob to do some research, get some information, and presented to all of us in advance, because in just a few months, we're going to be doing budgeting again, you know, so we're going to, this is a time for us to start, if we're going to be doing something, to start thinking how it can be done, and so on and so forth, so, okay.
Did you happen to get the email I sent to there?
Yes, the personal one?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it, I didn't see any.
I took a picture...
Of Nick?
Ninety-six with Dick sitting in the dump truck.
Oh.
He's going to be third in this one. So I think the truck's old.
Well, you know, that's going to be a good photo to put up on that, on the, in the, you know...
I want to get one.
Hang it up in here, yeah, we need to hang it up in here for the town celebration.
But also keep in mind the truck itself and the 300-day lead time right now.
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, okay, all right. But still, it is something, because we don't have it included in the budget, so this has to be something that we put in, all right? So I'm glad that you were able to get this information, and as, you know, so that we can begin the conversation then about, you know, we need to, thank you very much.
Great time.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so back to old business, no old business, I don't think, unless somebody wanted to add, no attorney report. Ms. Lane is business status of collections regarding those who are out of compliance. And I think that Deb, you sort of, you know, responded about that, the one place.
Right, so I had sent on that, let's see, that citation from Belong Me to Laura.
Yes.
And...
And then what about the other issue, the one with Metarol's torsion?
I had sent that on to Laura as well.
Okay, she's got that, so then maybe check in with her.
She responded, she responded that he was planning to be full-time president.
Okay. All right, well, you know, we have to follow up on both of those. Would you be able to run both of those then to Laura, please?
Oh, sure, so follow up with her.
Yes, follow up with Laura then on that, and figure out on how that can be done, you know, by you guys, and if she can do this for you, and if we have to wait for, or for someone, so anyway, you know, do this one in addition to that, okay?
Okay.
Any questions on that? No, thank you. Communications received, so we got from Joan already told us by Mr. Coleman?
The purchase of filing cabinets.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, okay, I forgot under miscellaneous. Purchase of filing cabinets, Deb is running her, the building commissioner code enforcement officer out of her home, because I guess it's just sort of unpleasant to work in that area in the garage, wherever that little office was. So I had begun looking for file cabinets for, to purchase for her, but, you know, I'm looking for secondhand, and they had some really good ones secondhand, so...
The ones that are in the garage.
I have no idea, you said that they're full...
They bear them.
Is, are they?
They're...
Pardon?
They're brand new.
They're brand new?
Almost brand.
All right, well, I had no idea about it then, okay, then Deb needs...
Take a look at them, I'll help you.
How many cabinets do you need for the code enforcement?
Motion's approved.
Cabinets or eight cabinets?
Well, you know, eight, you know, a file cabinet, you know how they come four drawers or something like that?
That's one file cabinet.
Okay, oh, all right, okay, all right.
We'll approve that one, used.
All right, we can use, okay. Use, and should we need to get something?
Well, because of cleaning and stuff, or town cleanup and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
We can go in there and empty those files, represent them.
Okay.
Yeah, when they live in there, they were, they had lockstep ones.
They had stuff in them?
I said we will need to clean them out.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, then we're good on that.
That was originally file cabinets for the code enforcement, not code enforcement, for the building commissioner.
Okay, all right.
In code enforcement too, but we just have file...
All right. Okie doke, all right, so now we have that taken care of, and communications, was Mike Coleman regarding Bill, and was there anything else as a communication you had, or just that one?
Yeah, I just got one in a couple days ago from Tom Cooper at 445 Blue Pine, and he said last winter, when they were snow plowing, they clipped the top off the cack of his, call it a standpipe, for his water. Michigan City came out and shut his water off, and it, I don't know if it's been replaced or not, but he wants to know who's going to pay for it. Because that's not his fault, somebody ran over it with us, tried to run over it with a snowplow.
So we saw this occur?
Somebody else did.
Somebody else did?
The, I'm not saying...
I don't believe that.
What? I'm telling you what he said, and the council's going to have to make a decision as to whether our insurance, or whether we get together with Michigan City, Water Department, and find out what's what.
Why is Mike, of course, why is the standpipe out of the road?
They all are out, they're off the road, they're not on the road. We have to get off the road, but when you plow snow, you can't always see where the roads are.
Yeah.
Did you say how much it cost them?
I have no idea, I'm reporting to the council, so they can check into the details, find out what should be...
Okay, so did this gentleman call her, did he send a letter or anything? Okay, so then if you...
Message on the machine.
All right, then pass along his telephone number.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give him a call, and we could get started, okay?
Dan, I have a question from Nick Wolf. Nick is talking about the new road patch that was done this week, he's unhappy that there were a couple spots not covered.
You already talked to him.
Okay, I just, I told him I would bring it up and make sure we were on the same page.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, just added that to mine too as well, okay. I think that is it for communications received with regards to town issues. Any public comment? Please?
Hi, my name is, I had to write it all out, because I just wanted to be as quick as possible and not listen to anything. So my name is Suzy Yance, and I work for the people who bought the house, 501 El Portal.
Okay.
And they did purchase the house with the intention of renting it by the week for some portion of the year. They, since I work for them, I was asking about the permitting process, so I consulted the Michigan Shore's website, and I read the short terms, what permits safety and security for rent or maintenance, and I talked to Joan, we emailed, we talked about that stuff, and we started in April, and I said, well, they got to get on the meeting for April, and she said, you know, it's already April 13, you need to have everything in the first of the month to get on that month's meeting.
Yeah, before the first of the month, yeah.
So I, on May 2nd, I brought our completed application of permit fee, hoping to get on the May meeting, and when I turned it in, I was hoping they needed to talk to Deb to, which I had not seen, read, or heard of before, so this was kind of a surprise step in the process. So immediately called Deb, and it turns out the next day was the election, so she had a few things going on, and so we didn't really connect until Thursday. And on Thursday, she reviewed our application and thought, you know, it was satisfactory, and recommended that we be added to the agenda for the May meeting. And then Joan said, you know, there was the time, it would have been difficult for sure to like get the notice out, it's 10 days, and at that point, it's probably seven, three days away or something like that. So we were really very disappointed, but, you know, so we were going to move on to the June meeting, and then I found out there is no June meeting, so I guess what I hear is that I'm just hoping, is there a way to get the BZA meeting for June? Otherwise, from the application, you know, when we submitted the application to the date we actually get our hearing in July, could be 70-plus days, that seems like we're at the wrong time to wait. We did everything we could as fast as we could, I mean, there were things that we went into, you know.
Have you talked to anybody on BZA?
I tried, I don't, I don't think the talk, I emailed them, because we're all on one email, so I emailed the chair.
Has that set the agenda for May? We don't really have any.
Oh, no, I know, and Deb said, I'd love for you to get her on there, and he said, no. So, I mean, I, no, I can't get on May. It could, it's not really a possibility.
But, go ahead, Michael.
Well, no, you had said that there's no one for June?
There's no, not one, and this, and that, I hope, maybe I can't think out of order, but I've been told, Joan said they don't usually have one in June, and Deb said they don't usually have one in June.
Well, they usually have it two months now.
Every two months now is what Matt said, okay?
They used to only have them three times a year.
Right, so, but what you do, they make their decision, is for instance, the clerk doesn't make it, we as the town council don't make the decision, the BZA is a quasi-judicial group, they make their own decision, they set their meeting, so we can't tell you, you know, anything, we can't help you get on their, their agenda.
I just wanted, since I can't talk, do they ultimately, because I guess they're quasi-judicial, maybe they're not...
Well, you, you can send an email to Linda Stewicki, who is the secretary, she's on the BZA, so, because you would have one person, but you can't be addressing every single person that's on the BZA, because they cannot stop you in between, you know, in general. She is the secretary, and if she can represent Matt, or you contact Matt, send him an email, and find out whether or not, you know, what they would do. We can't set any extra meetings, they can set meetings, cancel meetings, delay meetings, that's their determination. So you reach out to either Matt Bowen or Linda Stewicki, you know, who are both on the BZA, she's the secretary, he's the president, and then they will give you an answer.
Well, I did reach out to Matt, he hasn't responded, I was hoping he'd be here tonight.
Oh, no, he doesn't always come, but, you know, we can ask him a question, that's okay, but, you know, give him a couple of days.
We don't, I got that the meeting, the June meeting would be like June 16, and it could happen again, you know, really, even if they said, yes, we'll do it, if I wait till their meeting and go again, so another meeting on May 19.
See...